All right. Good morning, everyone. This is the September 15th, 2020 hearing for the Health Committee. I am Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chairman of the Committee. We are also joined by Council President Scott, who we will hear from shortly. And I'm still waiting for a few of our other committee members to join. And it looks like Aya needs to be elevated. Aya Diamond.
I'm sorry?
Aya sent a message. Okay. So waiting in the committee to come in. But I see we've been joined by Councilmember Cohen of the First District. And also, in attendance are a host of representatives from the President's Office, Mayor's Office, and from other city agencies. Before we start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists to mute yourselves when you're not speaking. This is an online hearing, so we can literally hear everything. You are not muted, so please be sure to do so. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly and clearly for all of our viewers to be able to hear. And after you're finished speaking, please remember to mute yourself again. We are meeting to discuss Council Resolution 20-0199R Investigative Hearing, The Wellbeing of the Transgender Community in Baltimore City. And the purpose of this is inviting representatives from the Mayor's Office, Health Department, Police Department, number of agencies, to update the council on services provided to and the general wellbeing of the transgender community. But we also very much have a lot of learning and listening to do today. And I am looking forward to hearing about all of the amazing work being done by organizations working to support LGBTQ community across the city of Baltimore and to learn what we need to do better as a city of Baltimore to better support our transgender brothers and sisters and folks who are non-binary as well. We also, I just want to note that there will be a hearing following this at 11:30 or whenever this one gets done for Council Bill 20-0495, Pesticide Control and Regulation. A work session following this one as well. So probably not as interesting as this one, but we're more than welcome to stay. With that, I'm going to ask the primary sponsor of the resolution, Council President Scott, to give us a few opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for being here this morning and for this important topic. We are gathered here today to make sure that our transgender community in Baltimore is protected and taken care of. We have to understand that the trans community in our city faces many obstacles and is important for us to listen with the intent to take action to make sure everyone is welcome and safe in Baltimore. That's why I called for this hearing back in February, so we can hear directly from our trans residents. We also would be very remiss if we didn't understand that Baltimore, a majority-black city, we have a lot of our trans residents who deal with racism and transphobia simultaneously. And we know the other things that are going on, like housing insecurity. We cannot tolerate instances of violence and discrimination against trans people in Baltimore. We have seen violent instances in Baltimore. Have to work to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. Part of the work is to acknowledge and address the violence, but also celebrate the beautiful culture and long history of Baltimore's trans community and beyond. It's very important that, again, we in Baltimore understand that we are a city for all Baltimoreans. And I think that that point can't be made enough. I will continue to do everything in my power to support our trans community. We must hold each other accountable in all settings, workplace, home, community, family meetings, to make sure that our trans community is safe and that we hear them and we see them as one part of Baltimore, as just a part of Baltimore as anyone else. The Baltimore I want to see in the future is one where all residents are safe and welcome. And I know we're capable of making that happen. And I'm ready to listen for everyone today. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Clark of 14th District and member of the committee. And we also have Councilmember Shannon Snead of the 13th District. Thank you all for joining us this morning. Just to give folks, just to give folks a better idea of how today's going to go. We always usually start with agency reports for their to open. And then we also have, after we hear from the agencies, we have two panels, one of residents who will speak about their experiences. And then we also have a data presentation as well. And then we will then follow those, that flow until we hit a public testimony. So that is the running show for this morning. With that, we are going to start with agency reports. And just for a good flow, we're going to start with the Health Department. I do see Jabari Lyles. I'm going to go to you last, I think you have a formal presentation. So I want to go through the agents of other agencies first, and then we'll go with you as well, so you have a longer time to speak. So let's start with the Health Department. I see we've been joined by DePaul Midbury.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DePaul Midbury on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department. And again, thank you and thank you to the members of the committee, as well as President Scott for introducing this resolution and Mr. Lyles from the Mayor's Office for really kind of spearheading this initiative. We are always talking about health and all policies. And this is a prime reason why, because we have this one vulnerable community within Baltimore City that is affected in multiple different ways, from housing to discrimination out on the street to accessing healthcare. And these are things that we are very mindful of as a Health Department. And these are things that we seek to actively address. So we have been throughout the years advocates for the transgender community. And just these past two years, we've been working on a bill over in the General Assembly to ensure that there is no discrimination in the admission and treatment of transgender individuals when being admitted into a hospital or related institution. That's one part of what we've been doing over the last couple of years. But we've also, we also realize that there's a bit of a deficit within what we've been doing. And so going forward, we've developed plans for both ending the HIV epidemic as well as our sexual health strategy that are inclusive of cultural humility training, something that we realize that there's been a lack of attention to within our facilities. And we want to make sure that we are as inclusive as possible. Again, we want to make sure, just like the Council President said, that we are really addressing the needs of all Baltimoreans. And that includes our transgender community. So one thing I did want to mention are several of the services that we do provide within our facilities. And we want to make sure that the folks that are here are aware of them and can take advantage of them, because again, we try to ensure that our facilities are welcoming to all communities. So with that in mind, we provide STI testing and treatment, HIV testing and treatment, PrEP and PRP for the prevention of HIV, hepatitis C testing and treatment, referrals for primary care, dental vision services, and substance use, and mental health screenings and referrals. And then within a separate clinic, we also provide health education and outreach. So these are some of the things that are available to our transgender residents. And we want to make sure that folks are taking advantage of those services if they need them. One thing I should also note is that our clinics are often clinics of last resort in that, you know, we are not really primary care providers. But again, if you are in need of services, we can always find you someone that can provide. With that said, I'm happy to offer our support for this resolution. We hope that it receives a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the committee or the council have questions for the Health Department? Okay. Being none, we're going to move to Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm not sure if we have anyone yet. We'll come back. The Police Department, I don't know if they sent in a report, but do you? I see you do see Michelle Wordsburger on here.
Hi. Good morning, Councilmen. We do have a formal presentation. We can do that now or we can wait towards the end, whatever is your pleasure.
Go for it. That's fine.
Okay. All right. Perfect. So my name is Michelle Wordsburger. I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. We are very appreciative of the opportunity to present here this morning. We want to make sure that members of the transgender--
I couldn't unmute.
I'm sorry?
I'm a very, please, I don't think anyone's speaking to you. I think someone's unmuted. All of the committees, please, please, please mute yourselves. You're unmuted. I do see a few folks here that are unmuted. Go for it, Michelle.
Okay. We want to make sure that members of the transgender community feel safe, not only to report crimes, but in interacting with our officers. And over the last couple of years, we've been very intentional, working to create a culture where members of the transgender community are treated fairly and equitably and with dignity. And so this morning, I'm joined by a number of members of our team, who are going to talk about how we're approaching this, this community. We are joined by Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown, Sergeant Kevin Bailey, who is also serves as our LGBTQ liaison officer, and Bill Joyner, who is the department's Equity Officer. I am going to have Sergeant Bailey speak first. And Margarita, am I ready to put up my, my presentation?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Just one moment. And for the, the committee members, I did email it to you all, so it should be in your inbox. All right. Can you, can you see the presentation? Yes. Okay. All right. All right. Sergeant Bailey?
Yes.
All right. You're on.
Hello, Councilmembers. Sergeant Kevin Bailey of the Baltimore City Police Department. I've been a member of the department for 20 years. I've been the liaison of LGBTQ liaisons since 2015. In that time, we have restructured our LGBTQ training, cultural competencies for the department by using the Police Commissioners Advisory Board, which is made up of members of the LGBTQ community and member, and also community groups to help review the cultural competencies so that way our officers could better understand the LGBTQ community as a whole, especially focusing in on the transgender community. Also, what I've noticed, what I noticed, and I still continue to notice, is there's a lot of crimes that are reported on like Facebook and social media, but they're not actually reported to the police. And we do understand that due to many reasons. One being the mistrust for police officers, especially within the LGBTQ community. So we have been focusing our training, and officers are going through training right now, which is called SSA Training, which is, which stands for-- I'm sorry. It's Stop, Search, Arrest Training, and it goes over the policies, the new policy for the LGBTQ community, which will be talked about later in the presentation. Also, with the help of different liaisons, Jabari Lyles from the Mayor's Office, the State's Attorney's Office, Merrick Moes, and community members like Aya Diamond, I'm able to just relay to them different things that I'm hearing within the community or things that they're hearing, we're able to, you know, pass along and things that are happening so that way we can see what resources are out there and try to get the best help. Aya Diamond also has helped with our department by helping us do a video involving the transgender community. It's a training video, so that was really a big help for us to push our training forward. So the one thing I want to talk about is the Safe Place Program. The Safe Place Program is originally a Seattle/Washington program, but it was basically for, to recognize the lack of things being reported, but also understanding that we live in a time where everyone has a cell phone and there's no more payphones and things like that. And people aren't, when something happens, people aren't too willing to maybe give their phone to a person to call the police. So it's a way to show that businesses that participate in the program will offer a safe place for a victim of crime. Yeah, it is, it's targeted towards the LGBTQ community, but it's for anyone that sees the placard in the presentation on a window of a business that knows that if something happens to them, they can go in there and that business will let them remain in the facilities until the police can come and help them figure out whatever is going on. At this time, we do have over 60 businesses in the city that participate in the program. Due to COVID, I was not able to go out as much and recruit more this year in 2020. But we do have 60 businesses across the city that are participating in the program. Is there anything further I should talk about, ma'am?
I think that's good for right now, unless anyone has any-- Mr. Chair, do you want us to hold off on asking for questions until we're done? Or do you want to pause and see if anyone has questions on this program?
Yeah, we can, if there's any committee members, councilmembers that have questions, raise your hand. Seeing none, I did want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Slifer, a member of the committee, and Councilmember Henry Miller, committee. But you're welcome to continue your presentation.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now we'll hear from, from Bill Joyner, our Equity Officer.
Good morning, Mr. President. Mr. Committee Chairman and members of the council, my name is Bill Joyner. I'm the new Equity Officer, as Michelle said, for the Baltimore Police Department. And so we recognize that trans people face enormous systemic disparities and experiencing violence, homelessness, poverty, and other sort of indicators of quality of life. And so to address our role in addressing those disparities, we have been following the guidance of local advocates and national experts for transgender equality and equity. And so those experts, including the National Center for Transgender Equality, recommend that police departments in this effort address institutional disparities through policy governing interactions with the police, including nondiscrimination statements, recognition of non-binary identities, the use of respectful communication, search procedures, bathroom access, and more. And so, and we have been implementing those priorities and goals in our policies. You can find on our website in the Draft Policies section, Policy Number 720, which has been updated to vastly expand coverage of transgender persons and interactions with the police. Some highlights of that expanded policy include, it will go into effect in, at the end of this year, after, as Sergeant Bailey mentioned, we complete training on Stop, Searches, and Arrests and other trainings that integrate these policies. And if we can go to the next one, Michelle. So it includes the proper usage of names and pronouns, including definitions, that again include not just cisgender and transgender, but also gender nonconforming and non-binary identities, always using the preferred honorifics, solutations, et cetera, for transgender people. It includes an outright prohibition on discrimination as recommended, an explicit prohibition on conducting a search or weapons pat-down in order to touch, view, or evaluate a person's anatomy, and other search-related constraints, such as always using, the officer conducting the search must be the preferred gender of the person. And if it is not expressed as a preference, then an officer will be selected based on the gender presentation. And so a transgender woman will be searched by a female officer. A transgender man will be searched by a male officer by default. If we can go to the next one, please, Michelle. There's also a provision stating that request for a person to remove activity-related items. These are things such as chest binders. Will be consistent with requirements for removal of any items for cisgendered persons. So this is now a gender-neutral sort of provision that protects the rights and interests of transgender people. We're also including the prohibition from using the presence of condoms and other types of sort of evidence as a basis for reasonable suspicion or probable cause of a prostitution-related offense, another type of issue that disproportionately impacts transgender people in Baltimore and nationally. So we've now written that restriction into policy. And go to the next one, please. So another highlight is that we mentioned that information about a person's transgender status should only be documented when it is relevant and necessary to an investigation. And that information will only be disclosed even internally when it is absolutely necessary to conduct and further the investigative purpose. And again, you can find the comprehensive policy in the Draft Policies section of the police website. And you can even compare it to the older policy to see that the protections for transgender people are really the focus of this expansion of policy in this new effort as a part of the consent decree process. So that concludes my section about the policy. And there are also complimentary trainings in order to help equip the officers with the skills, knowledge, and abilities to implement this policy that are beginning-- some are already underway, many will be ending by this year, and then the policies will go into full effect. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that is the conclusion of our presentation, but we stand ready to answer any questions that you will make.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Cohen has a question.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all the participants, to President Scott for calling this hearing, and to BPD. Couple questions. So I know that maybe a year or two back, there was an issue, there was an arrest near Johns Hopkins of a protest. And one of the people that was arrested was misgendered, was put in the wrong van. And I would say that some of the language that was used was also dehumanizing and inappropriate by an officer. So I just want to know sort of where the policy breakdown was on that? And/or is this sort of a whole new orientation that the Police Department is taking? Because obviously, that was totally inappropriate and a violation of that person's rights.
That's a, that's an excellent question. And so I will say this, that when that situation occurred, this policy was not yet in effect. We did have some policy requirements that, that would have addressed some of it. But this new policy that will go into effect, that we're training on right now and that will go into effect by the end of the year, really takes it to a whole nother level, frankly. And the whole, the reason that the policy doesn't go into effect until after we've trained on is because, as you might imagine, this is just like all the other things we're training on the consent decree. This is an area where we need to change the culture. We need to engage in a great deal of education about the transgender community and, and really develop muscle memory so that our officers know how to interact appropriately and make sure that they are talking to them in a way that makes them feel supported and honored and dignified, frankly. And so I will make sure that all the council members have this new policy in their in-bacs so that they can, can review it. But, but Councilman, we definitely are light years away than we were from where we were before. Bill, I'm not sure if you want to address any of that or correct anything that I said or add to it.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely right. So the policy is not yet in effect. But this new policy does address explicitly each of the touchpoints that you mentioned before, in the use of pronouns, the identity of, the identification of gender, but also transportation of persons. That is an explicit section that says that if it's necessary to transport an individual, that it will be done in accordance, not only to previous policies in general, but that if the vehicle only contains one compartment, then passengers are transported by gender. And it is the person being carried, it's their preferred gender that will be used to determine which van they go inside of. So it's their preference. And there is an absolute prohibition on using, on misgendering individuals, a requirement to ask how people prefer to be addressed in using those pronouns throughout. And so were there any other touchpoints of, so the one, the disrespect, the abuse of language, the misgendering and the transportation, that I missed a part of that arrests that was wrong, that we can address now?
No, I think that's right. I mean, I think the sort of like deeper challenge was not only the, was it misgendering, but the person and the people around identified the gender and the officer disputed it and got into a big public stus right there and then put the person in the wrong van. So it wasn't even just the misgendering per se. It was arguing with someone about their own identity despite multiple people correcting it.
Yeah. But it's now explicitly prohibited.
Absolutely. And again, this comes down to training. This, this is a culture change for the department. And I, I think that once we get through this training, the, the policy goes into effect. I think you're going to see a very different department.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question, Mr. Chair? Or are you just doing one at a time?
Oh, no. Go for it. You have to follow up.
Thank you. So I know that one of the sort of dark parts of our history in Baltimore, like many cities, was, you know, as we sort of went heavy into the war on drugs, there was also a, an additional war on folks engaged in sex work as well as just, I think, a general assault on the trans community in particular and LGBTQ community generally. I know that sort of part of what this hearing is and part of this presentation is attempting to rectify some of that history on behalf of the city and the Police Department. There's a statute on our books that allows an officer, and I don't have the number, but that essentially criminalizes loitering with an intent, with the intent to solicit for prostitution, which I think is, one, like very vague and something that I'm personally interested in us taking a hard look at potentially repealing. But two, I do believe, according to folks I've spoken to, was used as sort of a dragnet way to lock up LGBTQ folks, trans folks. It just sort of, right, anyone who's outside at any time could be considered loitering with the intent to solicit prostitution. So I'm curious, current enforcement of that policy? I mean, to me, that represents some of our-- I mean, to me, that represents some of our most odious history as a city and the way in which we criminalize non-cis bodies. So I'm curious, like, do we currently have, we in the past couple of years, used that statute in particular to make arrests?
Councilman, this is Lieutenant Colonel Brown. Hello, everyone. First, you know, with prostitution and any arrest that we make, we have to have more than just pretty much, you know, standing outside. And I understand that that statue was on the book just for loitering. And even when we make loitering arrests, you know, that's a quality of life arrest that right now, of course, considering the consent decree, we have other steps that we have to take in order to even make an arrest specifically just for loitering, period. But even in tone with prostitution, we still have to have other factors in that knowing that someone really is soliciting and that there has been some deal or something that's made and some, you know, hey, I'll, I'll charge you know, a fee for a service. So it's, it's really difficult for us to just say, hey, listen, we're just going to make arrests just on the premise of your standing outside for any type of activity. So we need more than just saying, hey, because you're in an area that is known for prostitution is just like being in an area that's known for drug sales or some of that nuance, you know, that we do have around that as a crime as well, we just cannot make an arrest. We need a lot more than just that.
Okay. I appreciate that, Colonel Brown. You know, I, I do know that, again, I think that statute in particular, and it was sort of a package of sweeping laws across the United States in the 90s and 2000s around, you know, interrelated with the war on drugs. But again, I would just say that I think, you know, we should be extremely mindful as a city that, of course, is under a consent decree and just with a really dark and twisted history of criminalizing people for offenses that frankly probably shouldn't even be criminalized to not just be engaging in those types of arrests.
That's our understood. And I think our vice is, is pretty much, you know, who really does a lot of our enforcement when it does come to, you know, our sex, sex work, you know, type of crimes in, in a sense. But even through our criminal justice system, you know, it isn't viewed as, as such, you know, my, my stance on it is we, we really need to get to root cause and other issues which send someone out to that particular type of work, you know, is deeper rooted than just, hey, I'm out here trying to just, you know, use my body as a sale to get something that I want is, you know, to me is deeper than that, and we should not be criminalizing that. No, we need to be focusing more on how do we connect, you know, anyone to more services that they may need, you know, whether that service is housing, you know, whether that service is, as you're saying, maybe it's therapy, maybe it's, it's trauma, you know, that's, that's behind that, that's underlying. So the, the deeper rooted part of it is that even with that vice team, even though as they go out and they do do their duties, we have a sergeant who is really, really intricate and, you know, trying her best to liaise those issues away from the criminal justice system, which of course, even if they do get to the criminal justice system and it arises to that, is not really a criminality, is, is really connecting them to more resource that, that's needed, that is, you know, of course, discussed and that they will reveal. So definitely understand that it's something that we're learning day by day, you know, because just like anything else, we'll have to learn as we go and as we learn, we'll get better. Because I think that the educational piece for all of us is, is great. And I think that it, it makes us better, you know, so.
Definitely appreciate that. Agree with the issues around root cause. Just hope that, you know, given your, the, the police department's specific history here, that again, you all are being very mindful around the issue of arrests. Because, you know, frankly, that's the piece that you can control. Last question really quickly is the new policies that we're implementing, do they require consent decree approval? Or have you already been in conversation with the consent decree team?
Bill, do you want to take that or do you want me to?
Yes, they do require consent decree approval. The, the new policy 720 has already been approved. Right now, it is just waiting for implementation, for training, for the officers to be equipped with the knowledge, skills and abilities to implement them with fidelity.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
And one, one final point, Mr. Chair. I'm going to follow up and send a direct link to our policy to the committee as well as a, a list of all of the businesses that are, are, are participating in our Safe Place program. I know there was a question from in the chat feature. I'm going to try and figure out if I can send that document through there. If not, perhaps we can get it to the, to the folks who are participating. And with that, I'll stop talking.
Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Stokes. If I may, I just want to comment.
Uh, thank you, thank you for joining us, Councilmember Stokes. Go for it.
Want to mention, because Councilman Cohen brought it up, I had sex work issues in my district about a year ago and certain individuals in the community, I don't remember when former Mayor Sheldon Dixon had that new no cruising law. They actually wanted to use the no cruising law in a certain area. And I told them, how do you determine if somebody is riding, trying to find a parking space, that they come here for sex work? So they, they got a little upset with me and, because I told them I would not introduce that because I feel like that's talking in people. So we actually brought in the state's attorney, the mayor's office, we brought in all those services, exactly what we talked about on the phone to try to address some of the issues that the sex workers were having. It, it really changed the area a lot because you don't hear a whole lot about it anymore. But to target people directly, like that piece of legislation that they wanted me to introduce, and I told them what to do it. So I just kind of wanted to share that with you because when you bring in those eight, other agencies, I did see that work when you bring other agencies and they start talking, the agency start talking to the sex workers and just start building a dialogue, a conversation. And that comes to the trust part. But you can't, can't just call the police, say they, they, the sex worker locked them up. That doesn't work anymore. So I didn't want to experience, um, share that experience that I had, that I still have that in parts of my district. But we were able to bring in those agencies to address some of the issues, the sex workers instead of, hey, let's lock them up and all that kind of stuff. So thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. So I, I did have a follow up to the presentation. It was noted that there were changes to the policy around the carrying of condoms as a precursor, I'm guessing as a precursor, precursor for search or for arrest. I had been told previously that that was not the policy of the police department to do that. So I was actually surprised to see that that was a policy change. Can anyone speak to where that, why is that now something that's being pushed when previously I had been stated that that was not something that the Baltimore Police Department was doing?
Did one of you have that?
So I'm not really sure about the policy change or really why condoms is listed into the policy. But what I will say is like through training for like human trafficking, that is one of the things that we kind of learn, like, you know, so certain, I guess, like condoms and maybe some other things that's normally used, you know, for sex, that's normally one of the things that we kind of look for human trafficking. And I'll say that from my child abuse sergeant days, when we would have young ones, which I've only really yet to investigate one to two cases where we did have actually a, a young one who was taken from Baltimore up to New York for human trafficking, when we were able to get into a house and do a search and seizure warrant, we did find some of those items in very large bulk. Now, I'm not sure on just the prostitution in of it, you know, for an investigation, but for my investigations, when I was doing child sexual abuse, it was more so, you know, looking at the human trafficking aspect of it. Why that's introduced into the policy, I don't know. Maybe that's the, of course, to change culture, to change, you know, the way that we're thinking, to change the way that we're looking at things to investigate and most certainly not to criminalize, if that is something that they may be involved in, you know what I'm saying? That we're not looking at that to, to be a criminalizing fact to say automatically, hey, they must be involved in something that is, you know, against the law when it comes to sexual acts and things like that. But I will say for, for me and training that I have had, that has been really, really circumstantial for us when it comes to investigating like human trafficking.
Right. And just, and just to follow up, Councilman, you know, what you will find in all of the updated policies that are coming through the consent decree process, there are lots of instances where we make explicit what officers cannot do, what they can do and what they cannot do so that, you know, there is no mistake about that particular policy. I just saw that the sergeant unmuted himself. Did you want to add anything to this point?
Yeah, yes. Also, Councilman, it, it makes it safer for a person that is doing sex work. It takes that, that stigma away from not, if, if protecting yourself. So, you know, if, if you think that, or if someone knows or the officers can arrest you or use that as a cause to arrest you just because you have a bunch of condoms on you, then as a sex worker, I'm less likely to carry the condoms. And how, how am I protecting myself from possible STVs and things like that? So it's, it's just another layer of looking at the whole picture and also having officers that are investigating that do, do a proper investigation into actual sex work and weapon and, and things like that.
Well, so to put a record, I'm, I'm actually, I'm supportive of seeing it there. I was surprised that that wasn't, I, I was told that that was already the, the policies when I'm, when I'm getting to is that my understanding is that when I, I raised this question previously, after communications with folks and, or sex workers or sex worker advocates, that this was something that was happening, I was told that it wasn't happening. And I don't want to go back into a, you know, he said, he said kind of thing, but I, I'm, I'm encouraged to see it there because I, I'm in support of it. I want to be clear about that. You have to sell me on why you shouldn't be doing that. I just, I was told that it wasn't happening, which was antithetical to what I was hearing from advocates. So either way, I'm glad to see it there. I don't, you know, you know, I guess we don't have to go in, go further into it, but I just wanted that on the record that, that, you know, what I was told previously was not the case, but I'm glad to see it there now. Are there other questions for the police department from the committee or council? I don't see any, so we're going to move. I do see a number of questions coming in and, and Michelle, I guess if there are ways for you to respond to those specific policy questions that are coming into the chat, or I would also encourage people who do have follow up questions, they can email me and I'll throw my email into the chat and we try and get written responses following the hearing. We, we do have a ways to go, so I don't want to go into each single one of those right now. But if the department can respond in the chat, great. If not, please email me your questions and we'll, we'll work on getting responses from the department either way. Uh, we're going to move now to the, is there a representative here from the state's attorney's office?
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Stegman from the mayor's office. If, if possible, could Baltimore City Public Schools go next?
That's fine. I called them earlier, I didn't see anyone, so we can, I'm happy to go back.
Yeah, they had a technical issue, but I believe they're here now.
Hi, this is Josh Sivan from City Public Schools.
Welcome, thank you.
Apologies for the technical difficulty before. I'm pleased to present testimony on behalf of Baltimore City Public Schools as their chief legal officer. So as we know, this school year will be unlike any that we have ever faced before. Our recovery efforts are grounded in our commitment to equity, recognizing the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 and virtual learning on our most vulnerable students. As part of this, City Schools recognizes the fundamental importance of providing safe and supportive learning environments to our transgender students. Our commitment lives in policy JBB, which was adopted by the Board of School Commissioners in 2019, which affirms that our longstanding prohibition on sex-based discrimination includes discrimination based on gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation and nonconformance to sex stereotypical notions of masculinity and femininity. In this policy work, many of the advocates here have been key partners, including the Baltimore City LGBTQ Commission and Jabari Lyles as well. We recently presented to the Board of School Commissioners on our overall work to implement policy JBB to support LGBTQ students. That presentation is available for review and we included it in our agency report. As we said in our agency report, the goal of all of our implementation work is to ensure robust compliance with the policy. But policy compliance is not sufficient itself. We also seek to mitigate complaints over the long run by building capacity to implement supportive practices. These practices will contribute to safe and secure learning environments for all we serve in the LGBTQ community, including trans students. We are establishing a cross-functional team this year of district office and school-based staff to gather qualitative and quantitative data to inform our efforts. We also want to create opportunities for LGBTQ students to shape our strategies. We want to hear their authentic voices and listen to them and make sure they're heard as part of our work. Some of the examples of the work, one particularly around virtual instruction. So we had some concerns that our virtual learning platforms were displaying the given names of students, misgendering students as opposed to their, their preferred or chosen names. So we issued guidance last spring, which we updated at the beginning of the school year, which affirms our commitment that students have the right to be referred to by their chosen or preferred names and by the pronouns that can, that conform and correspond to their gender identity. We developed protocols to address this with students, ensuring that students understand and are aware, and we take steps to address safety concerns, such that if the student's screen is observed by a family member or other person in the home environment that's not aware of their gender identity. We've also done significant work around gender neutral facilities, including adding gender neutral bathrooms to our educational specifications that have been recently updated for school construction and renovation projects. So far, we've added gender neutral facilities to six operating 21st century schools, nine schools under construction and four schools in design. And as well as two projects completed otherwise, Graceland and Hollaburton. And then just this afternoon, so this is very timely, we're also presenting to our policy committee that's chaired by Commissioner Brooks, who's long been an advocate in this area, we're presenting on another policy, updating our policy on staff sex-based discrimination to confirm and make sure that these protections are expressly provided to all our staff in addition to our students. And in conclusion, there's a lot more to emphasize that we can make our sex curriculum and enhancements to that, as well as many of our supportive efforts and around bullying of trans students and the like. But I just want to say that we have a firm commitment to supporting the safety and well-being of our trans student population. And we look forward to addressing best practices and adapting them to the context of Baltimore in partnership with city agencies, community advocates, and most importantly, our students to ensure the safety and well-being of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Baltimore Public Schools? Councilmember Cohen?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Baltimore City Public Schools. So first off, want to lift up the tremendous amount of advocacy that was done to pass policy JBB. City Council passed a resolution in support. And I know that folks like Alen and so many others worked incredibly hard to make this happen. And so I just wanted first thank community for all the work that went into it. Wanted to lift up a few things. One, another bill that we, the city council passed that does not specifically regulate our schools because you have an autonomous school board and when we do legislation, we are unable to name city schools as an agency, was making all single stall restrooms gender inclusive. We did that to affirm the dignity and well-being of our trans and non-binary community. And so I'm curious with city schools, I know at least a few schools that are currently doing that. But I'm curious, is that a doing that, um, but I'm curious, is that a, uh, district-wide effort? Um, and if not, why? And if so, what's the progress to date?
Thanks for that question. And I think that I referenced briefly our educational specifications, which are for our construction. And so it's really important that those now include as a standard gender-neutral facilities. Uh, we've done significant work in our new construction and renovation. We're actively seeking funds to do that in all of our schools, and, uh, we can give further updates on the details about specific schools, but that commitment in our educational specifications, which really looked at best practices, um, and, um, it, it is testament to our commitment.
Great. So just so I'm clear, appreciate that. Uh, so we are moving toward, uh, making all of our schools have gender-inclusive, single-stall restrooms?
Uh, yes, gender-inclusive bathrooms, yes.
Great. Um, and if you don't mind, maybe, uh, Mr. Chair, within the next week or two, if, if you could, um, would appreciate if you could report back to the committee on when we see that taking place. Obviously, students are not in schools right now, um, so, uh, you know, it's, the physical school buildings are on pause, but would love to just know, um, you know, sort of in the spirit of policy JBB, when that full transformation is going to take place?
We'd be happy to follow up. Thanks.
Great. Appreciate that. Um, and then wanted to know, um, again, sort of in the spirit of policy JBB and just knowing that, um, within our schools, and this is not unique to Baltimore, but, uh, that this is really an American problem, that, um, we do see a lot of transphobia and, uh, that, uh, trans students experience high degrees of bullying, that, uh, there is often, um, harassment that takes place, that, uh, all of this is compounded for trans youth, uh, because of issues around housing insecurity. Um, so I'm curious how you are thinking about specifically supporting, uh, the needs of that community. And I say this because in the past, I've heard that, um, complaints or issues have been either swept under the rug or not, uh, dealt with in a culturally competent way, um, or, or sort of, oh, well, that, that's just, you know, why don't you just talk it out? Um, so I'm curious in terms of like, specific training, specific, um, how, how are you supporting staff to support children? And then also, how are we supporting staff? Because I've heard trans teachers and educators themselves face an enormous amount of harassment and that the culture hasn't always, um, colluded or been there to support their wellbeing.
Those are all great points and important to our work. Um, and a, a number of pieces I won't, I could go into more detail and follow up, um, in our presentation to the, uh, Board of School Commissioners, we went into a lot of detail on those points, but just briefly, first, um, the, um, Department of Fair Practices and Compliance reports up to me, and so we are working to make sure that, uh, we get out, um, information about how to make a complaint. And then we have a robust procedure, including training for the folks that are responding to the complaint, both the school level and the district level. We are incorporating and working on, um, um, in our wholeness work, which I believe we've presented to you before, but we, uh, including gender identity in that wholeness work and also really, um, um, looking at the root causes of bullying and providing training and support. And then with respect to staff, which you mentioned, um, this afternoon, I mentioned we're presenting to the policy committee on updating our staff sex-based discrimination policy to align with JBB, and then we will work to, uh, implement there as well so that this all works together.
Great. Um, appreciate that. Again, would love if you could just, um, provide to the committee, uh, just sort of a timeline, effective dates, what implementation, um, and sort of a little deeper on what that training looks like. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, and yeah, if you could send that to the, uh, entire committee for review, um, I would also add it would be helpful, um, not only to have the timelines, but if there are, how many, I guess, buildings at present currently have gender-neutral bathrooms, um, so we can, uh, see sort of the trajectory moving forward. That would be helpful for all of us. Um, I'm gonna jump over to, uh, I think we have, uh, State's Attorney's Office on. Is there someone here? I didn't pull this. Okay. We'll come back. I don't see anyone. Um, I was also told that there was a PHSB presentation, Baltimore, uh, Behavioral Health Systems of Baltimore. Is that Stacy? Okay. Okay, go for it.
All right. Um, so, good morning. Um, and, uh, thank you for inviting Behavioral Health System Baltimore, um, for being part of this very important conversation today. Um, I'm Stacy Jefferson. I'm the Associate Director of Policy and Community Engagement, um, at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. Behavioral Health System Baltimore is a nonprofit organization that manages and oversees the city's continuum of behavioral health prevention, early intervention, treatment, and recovery support services within the public behavioral health system. Um, we recognize that the pervasive stigma, the recent violence, and also the discrimination of the transgender community in Baltimore City is an ongoing challenge, um, and not only creates trauma within that community, but also creates a, a huge barrier to access for, um, specifically behavioral healthcare. And so we were asked today to speak briefly about some initiatives and supports that may be available, um, to the transgender community in Baltimore City. And so, um, a couple of those that I would like to mention today, um, so peer support services. So we continue to provide funding for an organization, Hearts and Ears. Um, they are a peer-led, nonprofit wellness and recovery center, um, for LGBTQ plus individuals with behavioral health needs. Um, they operate weekly peer support groups, um, and referral services for mental health and substance use disorder. Um, also, the Here to Help hotline, um, our, which is our city's 24/7, um, hotline that connects people to mental health and substance use disorder services. Uh, they are available also to refer people to LGBTQ plus services. Also, um, this year, over the past fiscal year, um, we, we really do, um, just overall see that a person seeking services is more likely to remain engaged in care, um, if a provider is welcoming and affirming, um, of their sexual orientation and gender identity. Um, so over the past year, we worked with a consulting firm to provide sexuality and gender training program, um, to behavioral health providers that serve residents for Baltimore City. Um, we provided their training and technical assistance in order to fill capacity, um, to serve people of all genders and sexual orientation in culturally competent and in affirming manner. Um, and also I mentioned the Here to Help hotline. Um, so BCRI, which is the organization that, um, manages that hotline, um, they've received training and technical assistance. Um, they were one of the organizations to receive that, um, under our training program. Um, and so they are really able to, again, assist our LGBTQ, um, plus community with, um, finance services in a more culturally competent way. Um, and so I do recognize that, um, the initiatives that and services that I've listed, uh, may not be enough. Um, we, you know, are committed to working with the city council and other advocates in the community to consider to find ways to support behavioral health and wellness of the transgender community, um, and to really ensure that they're able to access care. Um, all Baltimore residents are able to access care. And so again, I want to thank you, um, Chair Burnett and members of the committee for inviting us today, um, to be part of this important conversation. We're also here to listen.
Thank you. Um, thank you for all you do. Uh, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move on. Thank you very much. Um, I got a message. There's someone from the mayor's office of homeless services on here. The presentation or agency report?
Yes. Uh, good morning. This is Katie York on behalf of the mayor's office of homeless services. Um, you know, I guess to start the conversation, I just like to provide a little, uh, data so we have some context, uh, about what's going on with transgender individuals in our homeless services system. Uh, as of today, we have, uh, 47 individuals who have identified themselves as transgendered in our, our various homeless services programs across the city. Um, so that includes our emergency shelters, our transitional housing programs, and our permanent supportive housing programs. And for context, that's about point, uh, 37% of our total client population. Now, that's likely an undercount because it relies on, on self-identification providers, uh, but those are the numbers that we're working with today. Uh, so I'd like to say that our, our agency remains very much committed to ensuring we have equal access for transgender individuals to all of our shelter and housing resources in the city of Baltimore. In August, our agency actually released a statement, um, affirming that we do not intend to follow recently issued policy change proposal from HUD that would allow emergency shelter providers to discriminate against transgender individuals on the basis of biological sex. Uh, so MOHS will continue to protect the right of transgender individuals to access shelter in accordance with their gender identity. Uh, that being said, we realize that policy statements alone aren't sufficient to ensure that we have safe, equal access to services for everyone. So our agency requires that we have cultural competency training for all frontline staff to ensure that LGBTQ individuals are not discriminated against in the provision of services and all of our service provider contracts forbid discrimination against employees and service seekers alike on the basis of both sexual orientation and gender identity. Um, we'd like to say that our agency is particularly concerned about the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on transgender individuals in our community, um, because we recognize that our institutionalized discrimination, uh, affects transgender individuals in a really myriad of intersectional ways. Uh, so from a, a Human Rights Campaign national survey that was conducted back in June this year, uh, the figures are pretty stark about the impact of this pandemic on transgender individuals and particularly transgender individuals of color. Um, about 54% of transgender people and 58% of transgender people of color had their work hours reduced compared to 23% of the general population. 27% of transgender people and 37% of transgender people of color experienced a pay cut compared to 7% of the general population. Um, so in, in light of that really disparate economic impact on, on our particularly vulnerable population, our agency is unfortunately expecting a rise in the number of individuals seeking shelter and supportive services. And so with all that, we are very much committed to ensuring that any transgender individuals seeking assistance through the homeless services program have equal access to safe, responsive, and affirming care through our system.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions, uh, from Mayor's Office of Homeless Services? Okay, seeing none. We are, trying to keep track of where we are. Okay. Um, with that, we are going to move to, uh, Jabari Lyles, our Director of LGBTQ Affairs, um, and just amazing, hardworking advocate, one of my favorite people. Sorry, I gotta give you like the, the intro you deserve, um, for all of the hard work you do across the city of Baltimore.
Thank you, councilmember. Um, good morning, uh, Mr. Chair, and good morning, uh, members of the committee. Um, I'm pleased to review this resolution on behalf of the office of the mayor. Uh, as was mentioned, my name is Jabari Lyles. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm the Director of Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Affairs for the office of the mayor. Uh, thank you, Council President Scott, Chair Bruce Burnett, and Councilmember Cohen, as well as other members of the Health Committee and the entire city council for scheduling this hearing and for your general advocacy, uh, in support of transgender and gender nonconforming people in Baltimore. Um, I stand by the submitted report, uh, which is somewhat of an abridged version of my prepared comments today. A little bit of background about what I do as Director of LGBTQ Affairs for the mayor's office. I advise and support the mayor and city government on the needs and experiences of Baltimore's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities while working to expand the community's capacity and visibility. In my role, I review and contribute to policy development, create opportunities for community unity and engagement, design and deliver capacity-building resources for internal and external stakeholders, and support the growth of new and existing programs at city agencies, uh, as well as community organizations. With an eye to history, one of the most important functions of my role is forging a relationship between Baltimore's LGBTQ community and city government. Baltimore's LGBTQ community has organized for decades without any substantial and consistent relationship to its local government. My approach to this role is deeply influenced by my experiences leading several LGBT community organizations and programs here in Baltimore years before joining city government, as well as my own lived experience as a black, openly gay, gender-unbounded man with suburban roots. It is through these lenses that I understand the barriers which contribute to why the government's relationship to the LGBTQ community is not more further developed. The history of state-based violence and discrimination against the LGBTQ community cannot be overstated. Government has not always been interested in the protection and advancement of LGBTQ people. Few governments in the world have a dedicated LGBTQ initiative. This role provides a historic and extremely important opportunity to right the legacy of wrongs committed against the LGBTQ community, to disrupt a long-established pattern of disenfranchisement, and to redirect the course of history. However, it's important to recognize the specificity of this bill. This bill is intentionally focused on the wellbeing of transgender people in Baltimore. Contrary to what most understand, the LGBT community is actually not a monolithic, one-size-fits-all group of people with the same experiences, goals, or perspectives. We are a community of people who represent the full range of humankind, and were brought together only by our collective oppression at the hands of society. While many are concerned with highlighting how we're all the same, most miss the importance of examining and embracing how we are all different. We must reframe difference from being addressed as an issue to being understood as an asset. Moreover, conflicts stemming from issues of difference are not solved with uniformity. They are solved with specificity, which is the very essence of equity. This bill focuses specifically on the transgender community because the issues faced every day by trans people in Baltimore City are specific, intentional, unique, complex, and deadly. This bill focuses specifically on the trans community because while many cisgender, which means non-transgender, white, gay, lesbian people are able to get married, appear on television, earn hot salaries, and influential positions of leadership at LGBT organizations or not, buy a house, find reliable healthcare, while many black trans people are forced to attempt a life of scarcity, rejection, ridicule, violence, and dehumanization, in which most of us are complicit bystanders and passive contributors. This bill focuses specifically on the transgender community because for at least the past seven years, each year was declared the deadliest year on record for transgender people because the number of trans people murdered surpassed the previous year. As we enter August of this year, 2020 has already been declared the deadliest year on record for trans people after surpassing last year's total, and we still have a quarter of the year left to finish. This bill focuses specifically on the trans community because transgender people are not just a community with issues, but a community with talent, strength, dreams, and contributions. Transgender people are residents of this city who do their best to live and work in a society that has not only left them behind, but is kicking back dust in their faces to obstruct, to obstruct vision and, and progress. We currently do not live in a world where transgender people can thrive as it is. I just want to say that again. Today, we currently do not live in a world where transgender people can survive and thrive as it looks today. Over the past over weeks, I've done my best to organize a thoughtful process to inform my report directly from the content of the experiences of transgender people in Baltimore City themselves, as well as dedicated service providers working for and with the trans community. Through a series of listening- Through a series of listening sessions, I was able to more closely understand what trans residents of Baltimore City are experiencing. Today, I implore you to take in their stories and remarks. Transgender people have been asked to revisit their trauma time and time again, only to get a bus token and a $25 gift card. This time, trans people are here for nothing less than complete and total liberation from the bind of disparagement and oppression, being constantly and intentionally fortified by our systems and culture. This looks like investigating and mitigating the barriers to advancement for transgender people in each and every system with which we interact, whether it's housing, grant-making, employment, education, child welfare, healthcare, healthcare, law enforcement, or criminal justice. There are historical, specific, and intentional barriers installed which prevent transgender people from living full, healthy, capable lives. Some of these barriers look like being able to find housing due to transphobic landlords, or not being able to have the opportunity to obtain housing because of lack of income due to employment discrimination, or not being able to consider employment due to transphobic employers, or maybe it's poor literacy as a result of being pushed out of a hostile K-12 school environment, or not being able to access school supports as a result of parents or guardians who are abusive and not able to access community support during restrictive, due to restrictive grant-making requirements rooted in racism and respectability that do not fund organizations who look like you, or you're not able to find competent mental or physical health services due to a lack of affirming providers who are knowledgeable about how to properly care for you. Lost my space. There we go. In order to force a change in the system, to give yourself a fighting chance at life, you are forced with no other option but to supply the overwhelming demand for sex work by cisgender men, only to be arrested and harassed by police, given a criminal record by the criminal justice system, thrown in a correctional facility that doesn't align with your gender, only to pray for daylight each night, hoping only to be thrown back into the same world that put you there in the first place. That is, if you make it this far. The average age of a transgender person murdered last year was twenty-seven. This web of violence is connected, rooted in the systemic dehumanization of transgender people. Before we can begin the undoing, we must start with unlearning. We must wrestle with the fact that most people on Earth, which includes most people in Baltimore City, do not have a working understanding of what gender is and isn't. We must confront the destructive representations and prejudiced narratives that we've been fed about trans identity. We must begin by developing not only a shared understanding, but a shared appreciation for transgender people. We must pair this understanding with accountability and evaluation strategies with trans people at the table to address not if, but when things go wrong. One three-time, one-time, three-hour cultural competency training will not fix it. The community is calling on the City Council today to explore legislative opportunities such as decriminalizing Article Nineteen, subtitle twenty-seven of the city code, which is what Councilmember Cohen spoke to, the loitering law for perceived sex work. That's something that's a local opportunity, advocating for sex work decriminalization in Baltimore at the state level, exploring safe harbor laws which prevent prosecution and provide education and resources for youth who have been charged with prostitution, advocating for equitable funding and room in the city budget for direct services for the trans community, including educational, capacity-building, job placement, and training programs, supporting the adoption of policy as it relates to cultural competency training and accountability for service providers, medical providers, and all city school staff, and enhancing the city's data collection methods to include information about LGBTQ people. The number-one concern from the listening session that I heard was the need to develop safe and affordable housing solutions for our transgender youth, adults, and elders. We also expect this topic to carry on to future councils, so to provide appropriate oversight on progress. The community is asking City Council to partner on clear pathways to success for trans people that speak to their dignity, their talents, and their dreams, and help us to lead a citywide conversation on humanity for the benefit of us all. I'm looking forward to being one of your partners in leading our city towards becoming a place where each and every resident can succeed. Your other partners are the trans residents here to get here today on this call and watching from home, as well as the dedicated service providers and researchers doing their best to bring these issues to light. I'm requesting the Council's full support and partnership to implement the recommendations we uncovered today, and of course, we suggest a favorable report. In pride. Thanks.
Thank you, Jabari. Before we move to questions for you, I do see people in the comments in the chat and the Q and A. As I opened in the beginning of the hearing, we noted that we always open with agency reports. For the council rules, we have to go through each agency that would send a report, a request for a report. And so that's why the order of speakers has been. I do recognize that we have not had a trans speaker yet. But that is not something that was an oversight. It is literally just how we have the flow of the hearings. We have the agencies report out first, then we go to panels, then we go to public testimony. I just wanted to make that clear. I know a lot of folks don't casually watch council hearings. Not always the most interesting thing, but yes, this is, I did want to respond to that, that it is noted. But we do have several organizations and speakers represented following the agency representatives. Are there questions for Jabari before we move to our panel, which is actually right up next? Okay, seeing, okay, Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jabari, for your work and your leadership. Appreciate partnering with you on the single-stall gender-inclusive restroom legislation and wanted to sort of hone in on the piece around housing because that comes up all the time in conversations that I know you've been having and that I've had as well. As we think about organizations like Safe Haven that are out there doing the work, housing folks, as we think about what it would take to truly house people, trans folks across our city that have experienced discrimination, that have experienced housing insecurity, what does that look like to you? Where are dollars best targeted from our limited capital budget? Is it something out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund? I'm just curious sort of what your vision, as you've spoken to folks, what does it look like?
Sure. Thank you, council member. I appreciate the question. I think that there is a short-term solution that isn't super promising and a long-term solution that is promising but takes effort. In the short term, we have to look at the housing resources that we currently have available in the city and to make sure that those places are safe and affirming places where trans folks would want to reside should they have to. And of course, not missing the conversation about all of the upstream ways in which folks are even arrive at the situation where they may need housing. But that's in the short term and looking at what we have because we currently don't have enough beds for all of the homeless folks in Baltimore City. And certainly, these aren't safe places for trans folks. But in the long term, I think we can look to examples of other major municipalities that have been able to construct an LGBTQ-specific housing facility, a place that provides a combination of permanent transitional supportive housing, so it could be a combination of permanent housing, transitional housing, temporary housing. But there needs to be a structure and a building where folks can feel safe, where there are enough beds to meet the needs of the trans community, that of course is multi-generational. It doesn't have to be just one. There could be multiple. I think that cities like New York and San Francisco, Philadelphia, we can look to examples. And so, you know, what I'm really interested in is while, until we get there, you know, augmenting what we have. But eventually, we need to have a conversation about how do we marshal public and private resources to really provide a space for for trans folks to live safely. So if I were to look into the crystal ball, I would want a housing structure to pop out.
Thank you. And again, thanks for your work, your advocacy, and your organizing. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think we have a question from Councilmember Clark.
Not a question, but just I found your presentation very valuable in so many ways, as always. And I wonder if, I don't have a copy of what you testified. And I thought it was very valuable to the council and the committee because you actually listed initiatives that should be undertaken. I know they're not complete, but I would be grateful if we could all make sure we have a copy of your remarks. I do have copies of a lot of the other testimony today, but somehow I don't have yours, Jabari. If you could.
Absolutely, council member. So I sent you the short, sweet version, but I'm happy to.
I want the long one. Give me the long one.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Jabari. For all you do, I didn't have any follow-ups, but I would like if you could email all of us your written testimony as well. So as I stated, we have now completed agency reports. We are going to move to a series of panels. Our first speaker on our first panel is Aya Damons from Baltimore Safe Haven.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Aya Damons. I am Baltimore Safe Haven's Executive Director and Founder. Thank you, Chairman Barnett, Stokes, Zeke, and Snee. And always, it's wonderful to see you, Brandon Scott. Where do I begin? Baltimore, we are in a state of emergency when it comes to the Black lives of trans individuals. We are historically behind in providing educations, resources, direct services, and programming. Why you speak for us, you speak through us. We should lead our own conversations at the tables. Homeless services that's inclusive and tailored to targeting Black trans people in Baltimore City, a place we also call home. But way too often, we're left behind. We are impacted the most, left behind at tables we are invited to, used as prop-ups without equal opportunity. Our ideas took and we're tokenized. Party and oppression pledges our Black trans community has been doing it for the longest. On a daily, murders, robberies, overdoses, suicides, created endless cycle of trauma year after year in a place we call home. Cries go unanswered, creating youth hard to the core with kill-or-be-killed attitudes. Our biggest outcry is our youth living in survival mode, doing survival sex work. If you know what survival mode is, you know what survival sex work is, which has been happening over decades and has a yearly reentry done in survival mode, leaving youth as young as thirteen to fend for oneself, positive by fifteen, ignored by a city we call home. Due to lack of education and resources, bullying, discrimination, parents who do not understand gender dysphoria from their children, they're left again to fend for themselves when they truly identify as their true selves, uneducated on same-sex education in schools, where same-sex needs to be taught as our heterosexual community counterparts. This has become the norm for Baltimore City and also for Black trans women, leading to infectious diseases, HIV, STP, substance abuse, to name a few, and don't forget mental health. This is a place we do too, call home. We must re-ramp our age requirements in the Safe Harbor Law to attack this, bringing the age requirements up to eighteen to twenty-four, broadening the language to include survival sex worker, bringing some help that is long overdue. Remember, this is a place we also call home. As murders and overdoses took the lead in 2019 with deaths, I ask all, I ask all of you council members, where is our help? Let us speak for ourselves at tables. Where's our plan? We too call Baltimore City our home. It's overdue. Do you remember the August issue for The Time Magazine? We graced the cover. Baltimore Safe Haven lived, experienced individuals on the forefront. Did that show you we can do the job or not? But here in Baltimore, we got silence. If that didn't show you lived experience on the forefront, that was capable and competent of doing the work and ready to put together our own plan and not let the allies, nerewake, tokenize us and tell us where we should go. Marsha P. Hanson, Sylvia River, Ms. Major Griffin Grace, all fought for inclusivity and respect. Over fifty-one years, today in Baltimore City, I still stand fighting that same fight. Let us fight our own fights. Stop speaking for us, walking through us. We need you today. Baltimore City, we call this home. We don't need great conversations and acknowledgements that everybody knows our path but us. Look at Baltimore Safe Haven, we're the first Black trans-led organization who lived with experiences on the forefronts doing the work. We have became COVID- nineteen experts, historians, historian leaders as we marched in the streets. We are willing and ready. We have our own plan of action. We have arrived. We are ready. We are willing and ready. We have the blueprint right here in our very own city. How about a RFP dedicated to us? How about a $1 million from the surplus you guys have over there to a $2.5 million one, including capital, so we can build our own places of shelters, education and resources strictly allocated for the trans community? Hi, Bill Henry, I see you on the call. Can we secure one of those buildings so we can rehab it and make sure that we have our own place we call home and do the services for our community? With that being said, I am finished, City Council. Please speak with us and not through us. Throughout this whole call, I've heard y'all, but I've heard less from our community. Thank you. Have a great one. And we are the living blueprint now. Allow us to be the architects of change in Baltimore City for us, by us, and our work speaks for itself. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Aya. And thank you for all that you do and that your organization does for the trans community in Baltimore City. You're truly a gem and definitely appreciated. I agree, we have to do a lot more to better support the trans community in Baltimore. And this will, you have my word, this is not the end of this conversation. This is the beginning. We will continue to work in lockstep to do a better job here. Are there any questions for Aya? I did see Councilman Cohen's camera come on. I didn't know if you had a question.
First off, Aya, thanks for your work and that you all have continued to do so amidst COVID. It's been obviously really challenging on a number of fronts. Wanted to sort of pose a similar question to the one I threw to Jabari just about your vision. You have done the work of housing trans youth that are experiencing homelessness. I'm curious, sort of in your mind, if we were ten years out, if we were able to allocate as much resources as was needed, what would that look like in terms of places like Safe Haven, having, rehabbing entire houses, entire blocks? I'd just be curious sort of your vision for what ending the trans homelessness crisis would look like here in Baltimore?
To start, we should do a shelter that's conclusive to trans individuals for eighteen and all the way up, and also have youth housing also available as well so we can separate the population. Also, we should get with housing and talk about some Section Eight vouchers as well, bringing in some editorial classes to be able to groom people to take these new spaces. You know, making sure that we bring education to our populations where they are because we're the only, as I said once before, LGBTQ outreach that's here in Baltimore City. We need to take more time to talk about prevention as well, but for the housing model, it's great if we can get Baltimore City to give us a property and also give us some capital money to put into that property. We have a proposal over here that we can send over to you, Brandon, Snee, everybody that's on the call. And a big thank you to all of you council members like Robert Stokes and everyone else who make sure that they're there for us all the time. But we're going to need a little more push from you guys. So our vision is to make sure that we have a space that's strictly for the community, that they can be housed, that they can get all of these services. Because I heard that she talked about fifty-eight percent of people losing their jobs. Where's those fifty-eight percent of people losing their jobs?
jobs? Because the people on the ground from parvy and oppression don't have jobs. They barely have the education to take them to those places. But again, in a good world that we see here in Baltimore City, making sure we had a shelter-based program designed for trans LGBTQ individuals, that they can have a safe space of their own. That leads to public housing or permanent housing or Section 8 for the city of Baltimore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have a follow-up, Councilmember? Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Aya? Thank you. Councilmember Henry?
Yeah, I put this in the chat, but was there a particular city-owned building that you're interested in?
Yes.
What is it? Do you want to email it to me?
I can't hear you. Can you speak up?
Councilmember Henry, sorry. Could you just put your email in the chat? And we can take that one offline. I want to make sure that you all are connected. So the question, Aya, that he threw out was the address that you were looking for. What I'm asking Councilmember Henry to do is to put his contact information in the chat for you so that you all can schedule time to talk.
Thank you. I'll put my operations director on that as soon as possible. Thank you, Bill Henry.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any more questions? Thank you very much, Aya, again, for all that you do, for all your passion and being such a strong advocate. You are appreciated. Next on this panel, we have Monica Stevens. Looking through, I'm not sure. I hope I didn't miss Monica. All right, we'll come back. We also had, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Josiah Demore. I hope these folks don't need to be elevated. Okay. We're gonna try and, if any of you are on, we are going to try and elevate you.
Hi, my name is Josiah Demore. Good morning, everyone. My band is He and Him.
Thank you.
I am an African-American, trans male, resident of Baltimore, Maryland. Baltimore Safe Haven has given me resources I didn't have access to before, me and Ms. Aya Damons. It was a point in my life where I had nowhere to go. I had nobody to run to. And being as though I'm not really a people person, a lot, it takes a lot for me to open up the fact that they were able to have patience and actually like, give me the guidance that I lacked, to the point where now I have a job with a salary. I now have my own place to stay, and I'm still able to give back to the community in a position that I wasn't able to before. I realized what Baltimore Safe Haven did and what they had to offer. And for me, it wasn't just clothing, showers, food. It was the moral support. It was having people to talk to, like, far as my hormone therapy. It was the employment piece. Like, I started volunteering here. I didn't really have any employment. And then I spoke to Ms. Aya Damons, and she gave me a job, to the point where now I'm just elevating. Like, it seemed like the longer I stick around, the further I'm getting, and the more success I'm seeing. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for sharing your story. I definitely appreciate it. And I'm excited that you have had an opportunity to work with Safe Haven, and wish you luck moving forward with that. And are there any questions for Josiah? Councilmember Cohen?
Just briefly, want to say thanks for your work and your advocacy. And I've seen you at the protests as well as at Safe Haven. And I just want to say, your work is very much appreciated. And to go from being, as you described, shy, to really being out there and speaking at this hearing and just pushing, I just want to say, we appreciate it.
Agreed. Okay, so it looks like we need to unmute Monica Yorkman, is what I see you signed in. We're working on that. Yeah, give me one second. Hold on. That should be, we're paneling. Okay. Monica, are you able to join us now?
You're welcome to speak if you can hear. There you go. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. I'm Monica Stevens Yorkman. So that's what the confusion can be sometimes.
Got it. Okay.
So, I'm a 67-year-old Black transgender woman. So that's act of revolution. And the reason I say that is most transgender women don't live to this age. And I'm here to represent senior transgender women, elders. And so there are a few things that I feel about this. I'm kind of ambivalent about this, this meeting, because I've been here before a few times. Over the past 20-plus years, these efforts have happened. You know, and I remember when the consent decree first happened, and there was an effort with police training. And so I'm really hopeful for this, but you have to follow through. This is gonna require work. I remember being with Jabari when we started training for the schools, but you have to follow through. We've done, like, 10, 15 years ago, efforts with law enforcement around incarceration, but you have to follow through. Yeah, because they talked a lot about using proper pronouns with arresting people, but don't forget, we're about to go into jails that are dangerous. Somebody is about to either be thrown into a men's, a transgender woman about to be thrown into a men's jail. You know, a pronoun is kind of cute, but it's, listen, the thing that I'm most concerned about in that moment is where I'm getting ready to go. You know, so there's another part of that that needs to be worked on. Somebody did talk about it. Being put into a place that matches my gender. You know, so we have a lot more work to do. I'm appreciative of the work that's been done, but there's a lot more work to be done. You know, and there's some other things that were not being said and what's being said. You know, Safe Haven should not be the only trans organization in Baltimore. They should definitely be supported to the max. But over the past almost 30, 40 years, there's never been more than like, one Black-run trans organization in this city at a time, because the support just isn't there. You know, and the money is always scarce. Aya has to like, work her fingers to the bones just to keep the organization going. You know, my organization is bare knuckle thin, but about the only thing I can do is have a small support group for elders and have a couple of other little things going. It's called Sisters of the T, and it's been around for 11 years. Yeah, but we're bare knuckle thin. And part of the reason is, is I don't want my organization taken over by cis people, because there have been trans organizations in this city, but they've been run by cis people. Yeah. And so a whole lot of this effort is really, really, really good, but support Black trans people. We don't need cis people to run things for us. We need y'all to support trans organizations. We need y'all to support Black-run trans organizations. We know what we need to do for us. You already heard it. She told you. You know, we have the competency to do it. You know, and then like I said, there's subtle other things. You know, when we're out there, we're not sex workers. That's not who we are. That's what we do. I have sex work in my, in my history, but that's not all that I am. I'm a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother. You know, I have a granddaughter who's starting to find her queer identity. She's a senior in high school. You know, and I have a lot of other talents and a lot of other competencies too. But soon as somebody finds out that we've done some sex work, then that's who we are. You know, and so, you know, how would you like it if somebody found out that you got locked up for smoking a little bit of weed and then you become a weed head? You know, but this is like, when they find out one thing about us, then that's who we become. And people become comfortable with calling all of us sex workers. You know, and let's not play games about what the police do. You know, all I have to do is go to Save-A-Lot on 20th Street and stand at 20th and Charles with a bag, and a police car will circle the block three times. You know, and that's surveillance. They don't actually have to approach me. It's intimidating. You know, so there are some policy things that need to be worked on. They've done a fantastic job of moving to where they are. They need to do more. You know, Jabari asked me to come on here because he knew I would tell the truth. And so I'm here to tell the truth. You know, elders are being forgotten. There's some of us, you know, who are feeling so downtrodden because we're like, I can't believe we have to do all this all over again. You know, because we marched and we protested, and we got involved for years, only to feel like here we are again. We're here again. You know, and so, yeah, I'm glad to see young people out here doing this. I'm glad to hear about housing projects. You know, but make sure you do it right this time so we don't have to do it all over again. You know, I'm glad to see that there are people in the city council this time, because I know when we marched, the people in the city council are like, well, why in the world should we set aside money for this? You know, why in the world do you need this? Why in the world do you need that? So I'm grateful that you're taking this up. I'm grateful that you're having the discussion about finding money in the budget. Well, make sure that you pass this and make sure that you get them the money. Make sure that Safe Haven becomes everything that it can be. You know, because it doesn't make sense. You know, Safe Haven, do you know how many people are at the Youth Empowerment Society? How many young LGBTQ kids are homeless and are in there on the floor every day? Just because somebody doesn't understand gender, because people don't understand what it is, because you don't identify with what they think you ought to be. It's unacceptable. It really, truly is unacceptable. You know, and it has nothing to do with anything. You know, people make value judgments about us. You know, and some of the value judgments are just so silly. You know, because none of us are out to hurt anybody. We're not out to hurt anyone. You know, so why should you care how I identify? You know, it's certain things like, you know, transgender women are gonna wreck womanhood for everybody else. You know, so please, 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 back this effort and make it work. Because I don't think I have another 20 years. It would be great if I had another 20 years, but to tell you the truth, I don't want to be 87, marching the streets, you know, and having to come back out here and being in front of the city council testifying again. Honestly, I want to be gone somewhere on vacation. But trust me, if I have to, I will. I will be back. I'll be back if I'm 90, if I have to. But you don't want me to have to come back. But that's all I got. Cast this bill. Make it work. Support Black-run trans organizations. That's all I got.
Thank you. Can you prove, are there questions? Okay. Seeing none, again, thank you for speaking. We can do this as soon as possible. With that, we are going to move to Manat Ali. He just joined us. Everyone, please make sure that you are muted. There we go. All right. Manat?
Hi, everyone. I'm just wondering if it's possible to clarify if the meeting time will go on, if it's going to be cut off at some point. I think I would rather cede my time to some of the public testimony.
I mean, we do have a hearing following this, and I see some of the agencies for that hearing have joined us, but we will run this hearing all the way through before we move on to the next topic.
Great.
And do you have a, did you, did you need any capability to present?
Yes, I do need to share my screen.
Okay, we're gonna give you that right now. Okay, you should have the ability to share.
Great. Are you able to see my screen?
No.
That's okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. I'm assuming you're looking at presentation view?
Yeah, we can see.
Okay. All right, sorry. Let me see if I can figure this out. Oh, can you, sorry, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Sorry about that. Okay, so, hi, everyone. My name is Manat, and I'm gonna talk to you about some local research efforts. So I've worked as a research coordinator at the Hopkins School of Public Health for the past five years on a number of local studies about the health and needs of trans communities with some of the wonderful people listed here and a whole host of community partners, including Aya and Monica. So just to echo some of the concerns raised in the chat, I'll try to be a little bit briefer than I was planning today, just to focus on recommendations versus some of the data, because I think a lot of folks have been speaking to, to the concerns that are in the data. But you should have a copy of the presentation if you'd like to see some of the specific data that can be used to inform policy and evidence-based protections going forward. All right, so I'll just start really quickly, giving you some information from a needs assessment study that was conducted back in 2016. One of the goals was to estimate the population size of trans, trans communities in Baltimore, and that's done through asking folks to estimate how large they think the population is based on their perceptions and based on... And, uh, based on that study, the estimate provided was around 2,000. Um, and this is just helpful context, hopefully, for, um, future programming. Um, uh, though it's important to note that it also represents an important data gap and need going forward. And, uh, transgender men and non-binary Baltimoreans are relatively underrepresented in local research. Um, so with a caveat that, uh, that sort of gap is represented here as well. Um, so another project that I'll draw on today is called CLEAR. And, um, recently in 2018, they used qualitative research to learn about the priorities of trans and non-binary participants, um, that, that joined the study. Um, three key areas emerged that really reflect and support what you heard during the community panel. Many trans people are experiencing challenges accessing and maintaining housing, often due to stigma discrimination, but also due to the lack of affordable housing in Baltimore. Housing insecurity is often interrelated with employment challenges, which include a lack of safe and affirming work environments, hiring and workplace discrimination, and exclusion of trans people from employment opportunities. And third, widespread multi-level violence for, for which risk is exacerbated when dealing with housing and employment hardships and instability. I also wanted to share this graph on top community priorities from the Be The Conversation survey, um, from back in 2016. So you'll see from BTC in 2016 to CLEAR in 2018. And now considering what you've heard during the community panel, the priorities have not changed. Housing, employment, and protection from violence are basic and persistent needs, which trans participants have highlighted time and time again in local research, and leaders have highlighted in advocacy, and you heard that from, from Monica a few minutes ago. The need for movement, um, and improvement in these areas is a big part of the reason this hearing is happening today. So now, as we get into data on these topics, um, I wanted to highlight how these challenges intersect. They can be cyclical and mutually reinforcing within a trans person's life. Uh, for example, unemployment can put someone in the position of relying on sex work for income, but sex work-related arrests and charges can also impact the likelihood of future employment, which can in turn impact the likelihood of securing housing and getting access to healthcare. Not only is it important to consider tailored solutions in each of these areas, but also how cross-cutting solutions aimed at structural determinants can really help expand opportunities and improve health and wellbeing. So I'll start with housing. Um, housing instability and homelessness is pervasive for trans people living in Baltimore, as you've heard. In fact, around one in three had experienced unstable housing in the past year. Among trans women, almost 60% reported lifetime housing instability or homelessness, which was also correlated with recent experiences of gender-based violence. Rampant transphobia by gatekeepers of housing, including owners, landlords, realtors, even neighbors, has led to fear of judgment and denial of housing altogether. As shared by a black trans woman, um, you have to face your neighbors. It's, is the landlord going to be cool or judge me on my appearance or think that I'm a prostitute or drug addict? These factors further limit an already limited resource, um, affordable housing in Baltimore. Access to housing services is also limited in that, um, trans people often worry about mistreatment and even violence. Emergency housing spaces are not generally considered safe or affirming. For example, trans people are frequently misgendered and end up housed based on sex assigned at birth versus, versus gender, which is part of this risk for violence as highlighted here. Um, and shelters are simply not an option for a lot of trans people, uh, which sort of underscores the conversations that have been had around the need for, um, trans-specific housing opportunities. Research has also shown that housing is intricately linked to employment for trans Baltimoreans. For example, employers often expect a permanent address during hiring, but not having a job makes it hard to secure housing. So in terms of community-informed recommendations related to housing challenges, there are a number of opportunities city council members and agencies can consider. For example, requiring regular cultural humility training for existing housing providers. I know we heard, um, about opportunities that are underway related to this. Um, it's also important to think about how uptake of those trainings, um, and knowledge translation is being evaluated and, and how often those trainings are being repeated. Um, there are also trans-led training services in Baltimore, um, including black trans-led services. Continued, expected, required training, um, is going to come up at several points during this, this presentation. Uh, but without a constellation of efforts geared at addressing citywide transphobia, many of these challenges are going to persist. There's also a need to strengthen nondiscrimination policies at shelters and to enact violence response and prevention protections that are monitored in practice. Housing services would also be better equipped to serve trans people if they hired trans navigators and case managers who understand, understand the strengths, needs, and challenges of their communities. There's also a need for safe and affirm, affirming trans-led shelters and transitional housing, um, as you heard from Baltimore Safe Haven, and, um, I believe the Yes Rockin' Center was also described. All right, um, moving into education and employment. So, um, trans people have faced considerable discrimination in, in both areas, which is often reflected in the demographic data collected in some of these studies. Um, so for example, almost 50% of trans Baltimoreans had a high school diploma arrests or less. 34% were unemployed and three in five were living below the federal poverty line. In addition, 13% of trans Baltimoreans self-reported being fired from a job or denied a job or promotion they were qualified for in the past 12 months alone. So the impact of intersecting challenges is really reflected within this data on trans women as well. Um, as you see, 40%, 44% of those who reported college-level training or higher were actually unemployed. And this could be linked in part to the impact of arrest histories. As we've been talking about, there's a strong correlation between arrest history and unemployment, um, in this data. And on top of this, 50% of employed participants reported current food insecurity, which was significantly more common among black trans women. It's clear that access to a living wage and the ability to meet basic needs remain a challenge, regardless of educational attainment or current employment status. Um, qualitative research has also shed light on some of the nuance in employment experiences beyond access. So trans people have often felt, um, reported feeling limited to service jobs or unsafe in, um, non-affirming workplaces because of the considerable barriers to, uh, employment that are faced. And this can also limit access to healthcare benefits and gender-affirming services. As a participant highlighted, there are many ways in which workplace discrimination shows up, and these issues are additionally challenging for trans people living at the intersection of multiple marginalized identities. Upstream of some of these issues are experiences within educational settings. Data from the National School Climate Survey conducted by Glisten in 2017 demonstrated that 70% of LGBTQ students had heard negative remarks about trans people at schools. And among trans students, 54% were unable to use school restrooms aligned with their gender, and nearly half were prevented from using the correct name and pronouns. So in moving forward, city funding for programs that incorporate GED courses, job readiness, and professional development opportunities, et cetera, can have an important impact. Um, for example, Baltimore Safe Haven is currently working to launch a GED program. At the structural level, we need investment in establishment of pipelines for education and safe employment. For example, investment from employers in job training and opportunities for growth in education, as well as inclusive job fairs that involve training for employers also. Monitoring workplace safety policies and employment, employers is integral, um, as is revisiting reporting and response for workplace nondiscrimination. Given, um, some of the continued reporting of workplace discrimination within research, it's important to assess whether these protections are really functioning as intended. Uh, finally, uh, nondiscrimination protections and inclusion policies need to be extended to educational settings, particularly K-12 education. Um, so we've also heard a lot today about the stark violence that's experienced. Um, three in five trans Baltimoreans had experienced some form of violence in the past year. And as you can see in this graph, there's high prevalence of violence across gender identity groups, and violent information is typically underreported. Psychological abuse was especially pervasive, and among trans women, property damage and physical and sexual assault. Um, expectedly, recent violence was also highly, highly correlated with adverse mental health outcomes like suicidality and PTSD. Um, one of the most salient findings from another study, um, featured in this presentation called LIGHT, is the high level of violence victimization reported by trans women in particular. So over one-third of participants report an experience of violence within the last three months, and almost 85% report lifetime experiences of violence. And to put this into context, the most commonly reported, um, uh, most commonly reported violence statistic is generally one in three cisgender women experiencing violence in their lifetimes. So unlike other populations for whom intimate partners are the most common perpetrators, it's also important to note that, uh, participants reported a, a wider range of common perpetrators, including strangers, family members, and current or former partners. Um, further, approximately 40% of participants report knowing at least one other trans woman who was a victim of homicide. And as suggested in this quote, "There's major distrust of violence responders and police in particular because trans women feel targeted." So there's a lot to be said in terms of addressing widespread violence. Um, and I'll start with the last point because it undergirds all recommendations. We need citywide initiatives that aim to address, uh, transphobia and cycles of dehumanization. Um, relatedly, safe and inclusive spaces and programs for all types of survivors of violence are needed, not only intimate partner violence. Health and social service providers, who are often the people victims of violence first disclosed to, should receive training in affirming and inclusive trauma-informed care, and some, um, important training resources are listed here. Um, and as we've discussed, funding for housing supports for trans people experiencing violence at home is also needed. Violence at home can often lead to risk of future violence, especially for youth. Um, prosecution of violent crimes perpetrated against, uh, trans Baltimoreans, including homicides, um, and affiliated systems for accountability, uh, are missing for the community. And there is currently a bill under consideration at the state level for banning gay and trans panic defenses. Finally, um, structural and socioeconomic challenges we've already talked about are drivers of violence risk. And thus, um, the previously mentioned recommendations should also be thought of as violence prevention measures. So I'll get into, um, some more data about sex work and, um, policing experiences. Um, this is an area that's really come to the fore through local advocacy efforts led by black trans women. Um, almost two-thirds of trans women reported engaging in sex work at some point in their lives, and 61% of them were living below the federal poverty line. Um, as you'll see, sex workers are considerably more likely to experience police encounters. For example, because they work in highly patrolled areas, police profiling might be taking place, et cetera. Um, 72% of trans women reported lifetime arrests, which was six times greater for black trans women. And a recent, um, longitudinal study that focused on street-based sex workers' experiences, um, among cis and trans women, identified similar issues. So 40% of trans women sex workers reported one or more encounters with police per week. And notably, um, 30% had experienced physical violence perpetrated by police, and 33% had experienced sexual violence perpetrated by police. Um, so there's a lot we could unpack here, but I want to highlight that once again, um, this confluence of drivers of sex work and negative experiences on the job are reinforcing one another and leading to a perpetuation of, of challenges. So for example, 27% of trans women sex workers reported that they entered sex work because of a lack of job opportunities. Due to high rates of arrest, getting a job in the future could well be challenging. Um, and this can also result in long-term sex work engagement. All right, um, and really taking the lead from, from the local leaders you've already heard from, a variety of measures are needed for addressing sex work and sex worker needs as well as policing. Broadly, there's a need to track bias profiling and discrimination in policing, um, with, coupled with disciplinary as well as restorative justice response measures when bias is uncovered. Um, we heard a lot about, uh, trainings that are taking place. Um, but it's also important, as I mentioned, to think about what the evaluations for those trainings look like and how community members are going to be involved in, um, in evaluation of these programs and whether they're really seeing the impacts in, in action. Um, relatedly, it's important that trans people feel safe and protected reporting violence, including police violence. Um, so, uh, we can consider things like civilian review board models, um, and the transgender response team, um, led at, convened by the Maryland Department of Health, health is also developing an alternative anti-violence reporting project. Um, additionally, arrest diversion programs, um, can be helpful for addressing cycles of over-incarceration, leading to underemployment and socioeconomic hardship. Uncoupling sex work decriminalization, both locally and at the state level, as Jabari mentioned, and an expansion of support services with pipelines for employment could really have an impact on these cycles of hardship and the lack of agency some, some people face when entering sex work. Um, so I think the Minnesota Safe Harbor Law has been mentioned a few times, um, and is linked here. Um, last, I'm just going to share some, some data on, um, health and gender-affirming care. So, uh, many of the social determinants we talked about are resulting in health challenges and poor mental health in particular. So over a third of trans Baltimoreans report attempting suicide in their lifetime. We also, also see high levels of current smoking and alcohol use. Um, headaches and elevated cholesterol were some of the most commonly reported medical diagnoses. And as is the focus of a lot of past research, trans communities are disproportionately impacted by HIV with a prevalence of 41% among trans women in, um, in the LIGHT study. Health challenges are often met with health systems, um, and health navigation challenges, as highlighted in these quotes. So for trans people who have health insurance, um, getting access to healthcare is a lot more than access. Um, as, as described here, it's the dance between the timing, the insurance providers, and other challenges like transportation and safety during transit to healthcare providers. We've also talked a lot about the cultural competency amongst providers or lack thereof. Um, the model on the left really sheds light on how uncertainty when caring for trans patients produced through institutional stigma can then lead to discrimination during healthcare interactions. Um, we've outlined a number of recommendations by level. Um, so I've, I'll highlight a few key points. To start with, an overarching issue in Baltimore, there's a lack of competent providers, and then available competent providers also have limited capacity to meet demand, which often leads to long wait lists for gender-affirming services. At the provider level, required and regular, um, cultural humility trainings are needed, especially trainings that highlight the impacts of intersection, intersecting oppressions on health, which was identified by community members as a need. Um, this could also be supported by increasing availability of CEUs related to trans care competency. At the organizational level, healthcare services need to earmark funding for hiring trans staff and peer navigators. And at the systems level, adoption of nondiscrimination protections is needed. Um, so council members and city agencies may consider collaborating with Baltimore medical institutions to mandate standard, standardized sexual orientation and gender identity data collection across local health systems, um, which is currently implemented inconsistently. And finally, ensuring that city schools are in line, in alignment with the new state recommendations for inclusive sex education. Um, so I'll just wrap up here, um, with, uh, with a quick quote from, from Janet Mock, um, who's a black trans woman and, um, advocate and leader. Um, "I believe that telling our stories first to ourselves and then to one another in the world is a revolutionary act." Um, to echo what, what Monica said as well, it's an act that can be met with hostility, exclusion, violence. It can also lead to love, understanding, transcendence, and community. We're able to share this much data with you today because trans community members have shared their stories through research. And there's an incredible strength in that. Um, and it's, it's just one example of how the trans community Baltimore, in Baltimore is strong. And we hope that the work that they've put into telling their stories today, um, can lead to understanding and community in Baltimore, and that some of this data can be put into developing, um, evidence-based policies. Um, so I just some quick thank yous, and I'll stop there.
That was an incredible presentation, um, and call to action for this body. Um, so I want to thank you for that. If you could also, um, share your presentation, um, with me or with the, the committee as a whole. If you want to send it to me, I can make sure it gets to the committee. Uh, that way we have all, all that was presented as well.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and I think you should have my email address. If you don't, I'll put it back in the chat, but I think you did. Okay. Um, thank you. Are there any questions for Manat? Not seeing any, but thank you again, um, for, for that. Uh, oh, sorry, we have Councilman Cohen. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, again. Uh, thank you, Manat, for a really comprehensive report. No, wait, sorry. On multiple platforms here. Yeah. Again, uh, thank you for the work that you did in, um, the data that you collected. Uh, one of the things, as we are getting prepared to stand up our trauma-informed care task force, uh, which is one of the parts of the legislation this council passed, uh, related to the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act. Um, the hope for that task force is that we take a really comprehensive look at trauma across our city, um, particularly for vulnerable populations, particularly for intersecting vulnerable populations. Um, so what you said about, um, the needs for trans folks resonates. I'm curious, as we go about that work, um, if there is a particular recommendation, a particular, uh, set of curricula, uh, if there, there's anything you could recommend in terms of providing sort of best-in-class, trauma-informed support, uh, just given all of the barriers and challenges that you and other folks have lifted up and outlined. that you and other folks have lifted up and outlined.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this sort of goes back to what Jabari was mentioning earlier about the need for specific solutions. So within trauma-informed best practices, making sure that there's representation of the unique needs of trans folks, and that some of the humility trainings that are going on are sort of like featuring dedicated time for building understanding around trans people's experiences and the intersecting traumas. I think that there isn't always like awareness amongst providers that they're potentially literally re-traumatizing people through their interactions, through something as small as how they look at someone, that they're misgendered, the way they ask questions. And so I think some of those like concrete examples that might land in a particularly unique way for trans communities are really needed. And I'm happy to share some other resources by email as well for trainings.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, I see no other questions. That concludes our formal presentations. We are now going to move to public testimony. So I'm going to hand it over to the staff committee, Marguerite Curran. We will just run through the list of folks who are here to see if there's any testimony, as well as individuals who may have called in.
Adam H U E B N E R, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Agnes N T U G I, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Agnes? We can't hear you.
No.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Last name is J O L I C O E U R.
No.
Thank you. Ally Moody?
No, thank you for allowing me to be on the call.
Thank you. Next caller, last name K A K I N C. Amelia, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Next caller, Andrea, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
No, thank you. It was presented in the research presentation, but thank you for convening the hearing.
Thank you. Next caller, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Last name Z A V A L E T T A. Adica, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Next caller, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Ava P I P I T O N E.
Councilman Burnett, Manat and Company, for the amazing data you presented today and the other organizers behind this event. It's very informative. And honestly, I've been out of Baltimore for a while, and it looks like I can trust. Things are in really good hands. Let's do this.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, I'm sorry. I just want to jump in. It's probably best on this call to refrain from honorifics like "sir" and "ma'am" because we're not really sure of the gender of folks on the call.
Will do. Sorry about that. Will do. I believe Baltimore Harm already spoke, sir, Mr. Councilman. Okay. Brad Rhodes, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Caller number 13. Do you have anything you'd like to say to the committee? We can hardly hear you. Moving to the next caller. Caller number two. Do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Caller number 20, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Next caller, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Hello? Next caller, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Candy, last name K E R R, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
Yeah. Yeah, let's go.
You're...
They're also their own entity, which I did not know, because Zeke was like...
Okay. Caroline Davis, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
No, I just want to say thank you to everyone who spoke today.
Thank you. Shanta Gore, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
There's an individual by the name of Malley Hatcher. Yeah. According to the chat, it says M A L L Y, last name Hatcher, H A P C H E R.
Yes, hello, everyone. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Burnett and the rest of the councilmembers and the committee for putting this together. I would like to urge the committee and the councilmembers that when we are speaking on the well-being of the trans community, it is imperative that you have trans identifying individuals that are at the forefront of these testimonies, that are at the forefront of these committees, that you actually have trans identifying individuals on these committees. Because at the end of the day, what happens if we have allies, people that do not live the lives that we live, that speak for us, when they couldn't possibly speak for us because they would not live the same type of lifestyles that we live? They don't operate authentically in their truths like we do. You know, even some of us have to live in stealth. Also, one thing that I definitely want to say, while I'm glad that we have so many allies that, you know, do you want to pick up the mantle and, you know, fight for equality and everything like that, we have people that are trans identifying that already do it. So instead of trying to necessarily push us to the wayside to fight our fight, how about supporting us by uplifting? One of the best things that you can do to pour into trans spaces is by using the privilege that you already have to pour into the movement that we're already moving with. I think oftentimes, everybody wants to, you know, kind of ride the wave a little bit because I know that LGBTQ rights, trans rights and everything is something that tends to be peaking over the last couple of years, where at the end of the day, like, we're out here fighting the fight. Let's show them that this revolution will be televised. You know, it's not many organizations that you'll see on the cover of Time Magazine that are trans-led. And I want to say it again, that are trans-led. There are not many organizations, there are not many trans identifying individuals that can bring the type of national coverage to a movement like what is our own. You have to pour into the lives of Black and Brown trans people of color. At the end of the day, you know, some of the statistics that I've heard on, you know, this entire conference today are alarming. Some of them, you might want to go back to the drawing boards because those statistics are greatly inflated. We need housing. We need funding. Stop funding these giant organizations that have one or two trans individuals that work there that they're using as tokens, that claim that they are culturally competent because they have a trans person working for them, when they're actually individuals, they're actually like individuals that are doing the work. There are smaller organizations that are doing the work, they're culturally competent, and they are setting the blueprint. They are setting the blueprint. The time is now to set the tone for how the next 10 years will go, and so forth and so forth. Let change start today so that it shows that we're on a new path toward inclusivity, equality, and uplifting each person to be on the same level as everyone else. Because it's our time, whether you all choose to think so or not. The trans community is coming for what's ours. Reveration, it's time, pass through, and we're coming for them. Welcome to the new leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's anyone else that is using the web-based, because I think we went through all the call-ins, you would like to speak and you're using the webex, could you raise, use the raise hand function? Let us know you have something to say or put something in the chat. Okay, it looks like we have one. Oh, yes, good question. How do we use that?
If you click on the Participants tab and scroll down to the bottom, or look at the bottom, there are three little boxes, one of which has a hand icon, and if you just click on that, you raise hand.
Okay, all right, so there's a few coming in. All right, so I will start from just the first one I see. So it looks like we have, and again, I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, but we're going to start with Tika Torres. I see Tika Torres is first up on mine. Well, actually, let's go with Malley Hatcher first. We'll go in that order. Oh, they're alphabetical. Okay, let's start with Malley Hatcher. M A L L Y.
Malley Hatcher, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Okay, I already spoke.
Okay, Tika Torres.
What's the first name?
T I.
Okay, it's women. Okay, got it.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, and thanks again for this. This is really important for the trans community. I am a trans identified person myself. I work as a trans care coordinator. And I think that the presentation by Manat really did highlight a lot of the issues that I'm seeing on a daily basis with patients. The need isn't necessarily just the fact that they are having housing issues or having issues at home and having issues finding care. They're having issues getting jobs, even though they do have education. They've done what they need to do, but now they're transitioning into this new role. And not everyone is awarded the same chances that I was. And my organization happens to be very inclusive and very accepting and very forward-thinking. And I was blessed in that opportunity, but definitely something that needs to be available for most folks is that, something to help support them with that, with finding the way to find their work on their own and to get that, you know, the same... See, I'm from Cuban-American descent, so to us, it's kind of like, hey, you know, that American dream of wanting to go out there, work for what you want to get, and make something of yourself and be a part of your society. And even if they want to, they're not given that opportunity or that place to speak. So maybe even things like that, or ways for folks that are trans identified to get into the public sector and actually help and be a part of city council, and how to do that if they don't know how to do that. So programs like that that help to uplift trans voices so that we can be represented and have a chance to get out there and talk.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we're going to, thank you very much for that. All right, I'm trying to mock you guys and see who else. Okay. Go with Megan Baco, B A C O, last name. First name Megan, M E G A N. Okay, you're unmuted. You can hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Megan Baco, my pronouns are they/them. I live in Charles Village. I just want to go on record of saying thank you very much for hosting this hearing and for all the opportunities that I know Jabari and the city are working to have, even diverse voices from within the LGBTQ community. And I think there's such, there's layers to each of those letters, and I think we're all learning to appreciate those differences and how we all treat each other. I would say that as a white trans person, I definitely have had different experiences, and I've been treated differently. And just to think of the diversity of the experiences within members of this community, not to lose sight of that as we do move to legislation. It is a challenge, and I just appreciate this opportunity. I've benefited from Chase Brex Healthcare, and I've benefited from just being able to, I guess, help support Baltimore Safe Haven. And I want to go also on record and say that for those organizations to be just a handful of the few is really just not enough to meet the need in Baltimore. And so I urge support for those organizations. And in closing, I think what we're trying to do here in Baltimore is great, and I think to continue to do this difficult work together is going to take all of us. And so just, I appreciate every single voice from within, you know, my community and from the allies. So thank you.
Thank you for speaking to us today. Next, we are going to go to Jeremy Lamaster. First name Jeremy, last name L A N A S T E R.
The person?
Jeremy.
Jefferson G or J?
J.
J, okay.
Okay, Jeremy, you should be unmuted.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, great. Thank you so much, uh, for the presentation today. I want to specifically thank, uh, Aya Damons, Monica Stevens, and Jabari Lyles, um, along with the other panelists, um, who gave testimony today. I think it was very valuable and illuminating. Um, so my name is Jeremy Lamaster. My pronouns are he and him, and I'm the Executive Director for Free State Justice, uh, statewide LGBTQ org, providing direct client legal services for low-income LGBTQ folks. Uh, I just wanted to, and, you know, keep my comments brief and just really echo some of the statements that were said earlier. Um, you know, as being, um, a white, sustained, leading, um, an organization, I, I, I do think it's very important that we look to and resource, uh, Black-led and trans-led orgs in this work moving forward, um, and that among the data and information we saw today, um, housing really is one of the, the foremost, um, as, as those needs. Um, just as a supplement, I also just wanted to offer up, um, for the council as well, that legal services, uh, do still remain, uh, a significant need for the LGBTQ community. Um, despite policy protections, um, you know, LGBTQ folks still experience, uh, significant discrimination in a number of avenues, uh, when it comes to having access, um, to housing and to employment and to healthcare. Um, and the ability for us to provide, um, direct legal services, representation for these folks when they're experiencing these issues is very important. Um, for our organization, um, up until this year, we only had one and a half staff attorneys, um, servicing the entire state. Um, as of this year, we have three on staff as well as a pro bono network. Um, but even then, we still struggle to meet the demand and need, um, not just across the state, but here in the city of Baltimore where we see the prime, you know, the majority of our clients. The second point I just wanted to kind of raise up too for the council to consider as well, um, some need that I have seen in the community, um, is the lack of resources and support, um, for Latinx and Latina, uh, trans and gender not conforming folks. Um, so I see a lot of barriers to access, um, in the limited, um, Spanish language services across, uh, these services. Um, and so I do want to ensure that as we move forward, about 10% of Baltimore's population is Latinx or Latina. Um, and it's really important that when these initiatives are being put forward, that we're including Spanish language, um, as a priority in our service offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and if you could include, um, maybe a website or some, some way for us to learn a little bit more about the organization, could you add that to the chat? That would be helpful for us, um, for the committee. Um, but thank you for speaking today. Okay. Um, perfect. There it is. Um, and sorry, last person I see, or next person I see, uh, I have a, uh, Ken Jaritsu. And again, my apologies if I mispronounced your name. And you are, you're locked. We can, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, was it sure if anybody could hear me? Um, my name is Ken Jaritsu. I'm the Executive Director of Hearts and Ears, Inc. Um, I am a black trans man in the community also. Um, just wanted to kind of, um, wanted to thank everybody for, uh, who participated and, uh, for this, this, uh, conference as well. Um, it was much needed. Um, there were some things that I wanted to, uh, be able to share, uh, if possible. Um, just wanted to let folks know that, um, in regards to, uh, uh, the council members, I wanted to be able to find out if, if there are council members, uh, that can possibly in the future be able to work with various organizations, um, that, uh, work with the transgender community at some point. Um, we noticed that, uh, Hearts and Ears, we've been around 20 years and we haven't seen any, uh, council members, uh, come to our center. Uh, we've invited, um, but we haven't, um, seen anybody come in. And we would love to sit down and speak with, uh, folks to, uh, let folks know what we do in the community in regards to mental health, uh, wellness and recovery. Uh, we also wanted to, um, share that, uh, because my colleague is here with me. Uh, we also wanted to share that, uh, we noticed that the data that was presented, um, also did not, uh, include a lot of data that centers around trans men and the trans masculine community. So, um, I also wanted to find out, um, from, uh, uh, any participants or the agencies that were online if, um, things like that will be, um, expanded in the future as far as, uh, getting that information to put out into the community for folks to, um, to folks, for folks to also be aware of. Um, I also wanted to speak to, um, in regards to the school system that spoke on, uh, supporting the, uh, trans youth in the school system. I also noticed that, um, that it was brought up about supporting, uh, trans staff. But I also wanted to speak on behalf as being a transparent myself, who has had children in this, in the school system. Um, will it also be addressed to make sure that there are supports put in place for transgender parents who, um, who have dealt with being harassed, um, in the school system as well? So, um, there were just a couple of points that I just wanted to make and just wanted to thank, um, thank you for the conference today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and if you could, um, send, uh, an email to the committee or to myself, um, uh, when, we can work on that joint. Um, just, just send me a message. Uh, and you can find all the right emails on BaltimoreCityCouncil.com.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Uh, I see a Lee Blinder with a hand raised.
Hi, thank you. Yes. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. My name is Lee Blender and I'm the Executive Director of Trans Maryland. I use they/them pronouns and I'm a non-binary trans person myself. Uh, we, I really appreciate, um, Aya, Mally, Monica, Josiah, all of your comments, um, specifically about ensuring that trans people are at the head of this process and that trans-led organizations are supported and prioritized. Um, I know that we didn't have any openly trans folks, uh, representing from the agencies. And so that definitely stands out as a hiring opportunity to ensure that our workplaces are, um, open and affirming for our trans community members, um, of all trans identities. And then we serve, uh, many trans folks in the city of Baltimore as well as the whole state. Um, our programs focus on social, medical, and legal supports for the trans community. Um, we have a name and gender marker change program. And 42 of our participants out of 170, uh, from, uh, the beginning of that program this year in April are Baltimore city residents. And we're seeing that folks are having a lot of difficulty in interacting with the court systems, both on being affirmed when interacting even just in a phone call, um, but also, you know, to the court to follow up on a name change. Um, but also in the speed of service and the ability to get that done in a timely fashion. And name changes are very important for trans community members to ensure that, you know, you can begin to continue the rest of your life. Uh, it, how your name is perceived on a gender basis in the world, you know, depends on how folks are interpreting your name. And if your name is not affirming to you, and if you're in the process of changing that name, it can be a really difficult, uh, process to access housing, education, um, and any other, uh, you know, financial systems, et cetera. Um, in addition with the social support aspect, I'm, uh, really glad that Ken, uh, brought up ensuring that trans folks have, uh, support for mental health services. We run a, uh, trans support group every week on Wednesdays. And so we're also seeing Baltimore city residents who are having difficulties either in social, medical, or legal areas, or just want to find other trans folks. Um, and in the process of looking at how we're represented through these systems based on the excellent, uh, testimony from the trans folks, uh, who've spoken before me on this call, uh, I would suggest that we look at the leadership and the boards for all of the organizations that are serving trans people. If there are openly trans folks on those boards in, uh, the medical area. So, you know, looking at Chase Brexton, are there openly trans people on the board of Chase Brexton? Um, are there openly trans people on the boards of the legal organizations that are serving our community? As well as, you know, and the frontline staff, um, for all organizations. And part of that is to ensure that trans folks really get to, uh, be the arbiters of our own destinies. Um, and that exactly like, uh, Aya and many, and Monica and many other folks, um, and Josiah have mentioned, ensuring that we have housing, uh, and employment access for folks through those systems. Uh, thank you so much for, uh, taking the time to hear me and to hear our community today. And I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Um, and thank you for all that you do, um, and for, for, uh, sharing your, your experience today. Um, okay. Uh, last person I see with their hand raised is, uh, Megan Baco, Baco. There you are. You're unmuted.
I think I already spoke.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I know I did, but thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, it's kind of difficult to drag on this platform. Okay. Um, oh, we have one more. I did miss one. Uh, Atticus Davaleta, again, my, my apology. I mispronounced. Working on unmuting you now. Okay. You are unmuted.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is, um, Atticus Almaleta and I am the founder and the developer of North Abmission in, on Station North Baltimore. North Abmission is a fellowship of leaders and friends from the neighborhood and street. Um, oh, and I'm sorry. I, my pronouns are he or they, and I, myself, am transgender and multi-ethnic. North Abmission is a fellowship of leaders and friends from the neighborhood and street in Station North Baltimore, all of whom are unhoused, formerly unhoused, or food and housing insecure, along with their friends and supporters. Many are elderly or disabled, some use drugs, some are in recovery, and live with mental illness. Many are T L G B Q. They all have beautiful gifts to share and truths to speak and visions for their community. And they work together to better their community. They know their needs and their community more than anyone else. Because North Abmission is led, um, in, in the tradition that, um, Safe Haven and others have, have set forth, is led by those who are directly impacted. Um, they have meaningful relationships with the community and know, know their needs. Every week, uh, these leaders lead, uh, grocery distribution and outdoor clothing closet for vulnerable neighbors, as well as weekly outreach, providing P P E and food and friendship, connection to harm reduction materials and resources to food and housing insecure neighbors and those working in street economies. And I wanted to lift up a, a project that North Abmission members actually created. Um, it's, it's called Red Shed Village, and it really goes to, um, what many people have spoken to, which is the need for housing and affordable housing. So Red Shed Village was created by North Abmission members who continue to work to support it. It's an intentional healing community that's based on principles of harm reduction and set in the community garden in Station North Baltimore. The village provides for people who were unhoused or in unstable and unsafe living conditions, not only a safer shelter, but a healing environment, space of support and dignity, community and connection to a wide network of supportive neighbors and friends. And again, it's an example of the really powerful things that can happen when the leadership and vision of those who are directly impacted by structural racism, poverty, the lack of affordable housing, failures and violences of capitalism, discrimination, homophobia and transphobia are at the center. We have a vision of, just so I want to just put out there, the vision of repurposing outdoor spaces and land and think that tiny home villages in Baltimore could really improve the lives of unhoused T L G B Q people, um, in, even with trans-specific, uh, villages. And I just want to thank everyone for, thank you for allowing me to speak and, um, so thankful for, for this space and for the leadership of especially our black trans leaders and for Jabari, um, who, who has been such an amazing leader in gathering us.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and I, and I guess for all of us, anyone representing, uh, organizations, um, please feel free to add, uh, information in the chat box, um, so that we can learn a little bit more about what you do. Uh, I think you two, two have done that already. Um, so if there's more, um, we want to make sure that we are very much well aware of everyone doing the work on the ground. With that, I don't see any more hands raised, so we are going to vote on the resolution. Uh, and I do see we have a quorum of the committee that we can make that happen today. Uh, is there, uh, is there a motion to vote on Council Resolution 20 dash 019?
Second.
Okay. Uh, moved by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Henry. Um, first vote, myself, and I am a yes. Uh, Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Risinger is absent. Councilmember Slifer? Wait a minute, I know you're here.
Yes, I said yeah.
Yes, okay. All right. So that is four votes in the affirmative and one absent. Uh, the committee, the motion, uh, the committee will present a physical, uh, for the resolution. The resolution will be placed in the, at the council meeting, to review and take a vote at that time. Uh, so that concludes this. Uh, I do want to, uh, thank all of you who, uh, shared your stories, spoke through, um, comfortable and make any of us feel today, we have a lot of work to do in the city of Baltimore to support our, our trans community, our LGBTQ community. Um, we have a commitment from this committee that this will move forward. I know it is a priority of Councilmember Scott, um, as well. Um, and so I, I'm very appreciative of all that were here today, uh, and especially the recommendations for privacy and secrets, uh, because that's honestly the most important piece. It's the role, what are we actually doing? What are we actually investing in beyond, um, talking about the issue? So, uh, I do appreciate the call to action and the specific asks that we put forward. And so thank you all again for joining us today. Um, we're going to recess for two minutes. Um, we allow for the transition to our ministerial meeting. We think the same, uh, but our next, uh, thing is going to be for, um, for possession for Council 20 dash 0495 pesticide conforming regulation. Um, so, uh, just give me one minute, transition over, and I will prepare.